I invite all those gathered here to join me in the spirit of quiet meditation and prayer. Spirit of love, so many of the issues that divide us exist only in our minds created from our misconceptions and misunderstandings. May we look with the eyes of spirit and the eyes of heart to see beyond the barriers we built to cloak our fears and the monuments we erected to celebrate our foolishness. These are our prayers of diversity. Let the colors of our skin be seen as richly hued paints on the canvas of humanity. We shall not allow the variety of our experiences, the unique traditions of our families, nor the genetics of our birth to be diminished by the false epithet of race. Let the inspirations of our affections be seen as manifest ways of expressing love. We shall not allow the physical assumptions of bodies, the mistaken injustices of the past, nor the brutal ignorance of prejudice to denigrate the inner knowledge of our gendering. Let the patterns of our lives be seen as ever-changing rivers, whose shores create rich landscape and whose common destination is the great ocean of life. We shall not allow the dictates of fashion, the presumption of numbers, nor the fear of death to belittle the accumulation of our years. Fear and foolishness will fade away when the spirit is set free. So let it be for you, so let it be for me. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mary. Officially call this meeting to order. Mary, has there been a current present or notice been given?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mr. Nyberg, any agenda updates?
Yes, sir, I do. Item 8.1 under other business has been removed at the request of the applicant.
Thank you. Perfect. And now we have approval of minutes from our March 21st, 2019 Regular City Commission meeting. What's the will of this commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have a proclamation this evening for National Arbor Day. Know ye whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for the fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase -- excuse me -- values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are sources of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Michael L. Holland, Mayor of the City of Eustis, Florida, do hereby proclaim Friday, April the 26th, 2019, as National Arbor Day in the City of Eustis, Florida. And I urge all citizens to celebrate National Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. I further urge all citizens to plant trees, to garden, to health, and to promote the well-being of our future generations. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have a presentation for a dog park in memoriam of Commissioner Jananne Thompson. Rick?
Hi, Rick Garrick, Public Works Director. And there we go. We're presenting to you today an idea of constructing a dog park in memoriam of the late Commissioner Jananne Thompson, something she had asked a bunch of times, and, you know, we wanted to follow through with it. So I did a -- go ahead and flip. Did just a conceptual design and pulled some estimates together. So we looked at a couple different properties. Three of them kind of had some legs to it and looked at the benefits of each. And I think the one that fits us the best is everybody Hazelton Water. We -- the large advantage of that one is we already have the existing fencing. One of the fences we'll have to relocate, and we'll see how that works. It may be that we have to put in new fencing in the area. But the other three sides of it are solid, and we can use that. That's part of the security of our water plant. You know, some of the other ones we looked at was at Palmetto Point, kind of the Getford-Hicks Ditch corner, and then also back where we demoed the shuffleboard courts behind the senior center off of board. But none of them gives the property and the size that we have on this one. So as we looked at it, started doing the layouts, and again, this is just my design that I came up with. We've got some area for some parking. We're looking at just coming in with asphalt milling, the parking area there on the upper left side. We'll put some handicap parking as well, and some sidewalks, basically you can come across the sidewalks and you're not walking from the dirt. Also, we would have a separate area for the large dogs and the small dogs. It's about a three-quarter acre for the large dogs and a half acre for the small dogs. And the little hatched area, kind of right in the center, it's kind of, you have a set of gates where you'll walk in, close the gate behind you, and then you have a different gate that'll allow you to get into the small dog or the large dog. So you don't take a chance your dog just running away through another gate. Also, we would look at putting -- putting a wash station there as well, bring the water in, have some wash tables where you can wash your dogs after they've been playing and getting dirty and all that stuff. So some of the improvements that we're looking that are kind of priced out, covered in the costs, you know, the milling areas with the dry aisles, the two dog parks, the gated entrance. But then also, we went through and looked at getting some benches, you know, for some seating areas, also some of the little octagon tables where people could sit, kind of put them up underneath the shade areas that we have, dual water fountains. So, and there's, as we go through, there's other pictures that are a little bit bigger, but it's all, it's a water fountain for the people, but then also down low for the dogs so they can get something. Make sure that we have the trash receptacles with the bags. And what we found, and I've talked to some of the other public work directors around, and the people are really responsible, they're happy to have it. So a lot of the cleanup and the improvements are done by the people that we use at the park. It's not something that just, you know, tends to get away from you. And GT wanted the water park for the dogs, and that would be a wonderful idea, but with that, the costs, you have to have a recycle system, and it just really is cost prohibitive. But I did find these fire hydrants, and there's a button you press, and they have misters. It only puts out between one and two gallons per minute, and they run on like a minute cycle, and, you know, there's the little mess, and the dogs, I'm sure, are going to come up, and I know my dogs are going to come up and fight at it and all that stuff. So we will have some water features, but we can just do that like on a paver area, to where we don't really have to worry about drainage and any type of recirc system there. So the price going through, and I wanted to do a pretty detailed price and have something that, you know, I can trust. So we're looking at basically to get everything prepped, establish, and we're not looking at size, just coming in, seating the mulch, putting the hay down. But with all the different amenities, water features, and concrete pads, we're looking at about $75,000 for that to go, kind of what we have shown here. Some funding opportunities. And these are some of the different amenities that we're talking about. These are the costs associated with them. Maybe a sponsor, maybe a business will sponsor it. You know, we can make up some little plaques or little signs or something like that, we can do within our sign shop. Those are kind of the prices of where we're at, you know, just for the purchase of the items. So maybe there's a means of getting some sponsorship, you know, just as we're looking at to try to recoup a little bit of the costs. And then also, something that's a neat idea we've seen around is the brick paver dedication, where you can have them engraved. It costs about $50 a brick to get them paved, and what I would suggest is you would do a offering, and then we would go back and match the bricks, with the same brick, to where we're filling in with the ones that are not already engraved. So that way, if there is another offering to have where we want to go through, we try to do a fundraiser or something, something else is left. It's just a matter of pulling that brick paver up, they wouldn't be grouted in, just sanded in, pull them out, and we come through. Maybe a little fading of the color, but otherwise it would match in. And kind of a nice area, I think, that would look good is, as you walk into the fenced area, you know, we wouldn't put it under the tables, under the wash tables, but there is going to be an area in there that, you know, that whole area is 20 by 25, so you're looking at a brick paver area that's probably going to be about 18 by 25, so we could put them in there. You know, I just kind of came up with the ideas. If it's something we want to look at, we could also do, you know, it's popular, we could do other areas and around the features that we put in, and we could do the same type of thing. So, yeah, just as, you know, right now, we don't have it in the budget. We don't have anything in the budget for it. If it is something that you want to consider, we could look at either doing a budget amendment this year, or something where we could come in and get into the capital plan. We can, I'd love to get started with it. I think it would be important, it's something she pushed for. I've heard a lot of comments from the citizens, and if we can make it happen, it would be great. So it's, I wanted to bring to you, get your ideas, and see if you wanted us to look at getting this done.
Any questions of Rick?
It would be really, it would be really great to get your list and the prices, and then let us go out to the community and see about getting the donations to make it happen. You know, I know there's several civic organizations that would make a donation in memory of Carla, so.
If there's a consensus from commission tonight to proceed with the project, we could start with that fundraising campaign tomorrow.
That would be excellent. I would, yes.
Any other questions of Rick?
I think the brick idea is amazing. They actually, I went to the World War II Museum in New Orleans, and you can purchase a brick for your loved one, and it's kind of hard finding them, but once you find them, it's kind of, it's just a great feeling that they were memorialized in some small parts, so I think it's a great idea. Rick?
Hi, Rick. Great job. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have consensus of the commission to move forward with trying to get some pricing and things together? All right. Okay. Let's move forward, Rick. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And next, we have acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report. Ms. Colleen?
So our comprehensive annual financial report, affectionately called the Capper. This year, on the cover, we have the skate park, a brand-new skate park, which brought up the conversation, which is cooler, the skate park or the Capper? Oh, and by the way, I numbered the slides to manage your excitement.
Colleen, would you make note of the backside of the Capper, please?
Okay.
You just did, you just saw it.
I see it's hard to choose between the two. Yeah. So which is cooler? Let me just point out a few things. I think it's real obvious. Safety, you will never break an arm while reading the Capper. Also, yeah.
Really throwing that one out there for me?
You don't have to wear icky sunscreen. The skate park was half a million dollars, the Capper is a lot cheaper. And you will become a great conversationalist with all the information that you'll be sharing. So who gets to produce a Capper? You have to be a government entity with revenues over $250,000. And this applies to every state in the U.S. and in Canada. A very cool fact, every Capper is exactly the same. Of course, the content is different, but you have an introductory section, a financial section, and a stat section. So I'm going to start with the back of the book. The stat section is great for parties, if you have to keep your plane trivia pursuit or Jeopardy, a few fun facts. Who is the largest employer in the city? Publix. How many books are available at our library? Would you say over 100,000, under 100,000? We have over 126,000. And then who pays the most in taxes in the City of Eustis, Duke Energy or Sprint?
Sprint.
It's Sprint. The financial section, I just want to point out that we're six of 10 slides. Okay. So this is super summarized, and this is a statement of activities. So this is looking at our funds from a business perspective. So you have governmental, and that includes a general fund, business type, that's like water and sewer, and then you have a total. And if you look down at the bottom, net position is kind of like retained earnings. We have over 110 million. So you think, woo-hoo, we're rich. But we're kind of like the Queen of England, where our assets are our buildings, our land, our roads, vehicles, equipment, so not really liquid. And then this is a super summarized statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. This is the governmental funds. It's more on a cash basis. So our general fund, we have over 8 million in fund balance, and then in total, over 13.8 million in fund balance. And then the introductory section, that's at the beginning of the book, and that's where we introduce the readers to our commission. We talk about our city and some of our accomplishments, like the skate park, the eastern wastewater plan expansion, Palmetto Plaza, which will be done this year. We bought a fire truck last year, we're buying a ladder truck this year, and also we replaced four police vehicles. And it's the 30th year of receiving the Financial Reporting Award. So in summary, yes, thank you, Gail. In summary, the Capper and the skate park.
Thank you, Colleen. It's not as painful as I thought. Any questions of Colleen?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we come down to appointments. The first one, we have appointment to the Code Enforcement Board, Karen Sartell. What's the will of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Next, we have appointment to the Eustis Housing Authority, Ronnie Bugs. What's the will of the commission?
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Ronnie Bugs to the Eustis Housing Authority.
Thank you so much. Have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Reappointment of the Code Enforcement Board, Russell Johnson. Will of the commission?
Motion to approve the reappointment.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Appointment to Police Pension Board of Trust, Diane Thomas. What's the will of the commission?
We appoint Diane Thomas.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Thank you all for your willingness to serve.
Can we have them, if they're in the room, to stand at least?
I know Diane's here. Ronnie's here.
Mr. Bugs?
Thank you all. Next, we're coming down to audience to be heard. If you'd like to speak to the commission on something that's not on the agenda tonight, if you'd come to the podium, please give us your name, and then you can speak to us. Please.
I picture you. I have a card from Gail Isaac Thomas.
Good evening again, city manager, commissioners, and attorney. Of course, I'm Gail Isaac Thomas. And I have a question. Corey Rowe was our director of the Eustis Rec Department, and when he died several years ago, it was asked by the community if the park across from Carver Park would be named in his honor. That has yet been done, and it died, just like Corey. And I don't think that's fair. What can be done?
We can talk about it, see if we can come back up with it.
Well, something needs to be done. Something really does need to be done. Corey worked many, many, many years as director of Eustis Recreation Department and did an awesome job. And everybody looked up to Corey. Corey was a big help in our community, and something really needs to be done in his honor. And naming a park in his honor, as well as, I'm gonna put it in, a scoreboard, would really benefit the community. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Monica Bugs?
Ms. Monica.
My name is Monica Bugs and resident of Eustis, Florida. And at our last, my last city commission meeting, I asked our manager a question, and it was something on the agenda, and it was Carver Park had been designated as for general public use. And my question to him was, what was Carver Park before it was designated as general public use? And I got a response that I wasn't really happy with, and I'm not going to really go into the response. But during our conversation, we talked about the fact that the pier out there had been built by a group of African-American men, and he said that if I could get the names of the people that built it, that he would see that the plaque was put back up there. And he sent me to the Historical Society or Historical Museum and the library, and I have been to those places online, not really to the building itself, and to the library, and I had some difficulty finding that information. But I did find out that it was a grant that the Eustis, the City of Eustis got. So perhaps it's in the archives here, or perhaps some of you have access to it and can find out that information so that it can be put back up there. We do know the names of some of those people, and if not, it might be a good opportunity for some of you to do as Mr. Karrison Darius said when he was at the interviews, because I wasn't here at the interviews, but I did watch it live, knock on some of the doors, and some of those people can tell you. Because in that conversation with Mr. Nyberg, he was saying that part of the reason that it had been designated for general public use was to get grants for improvement. Well, Carver Park was nothing but orange groves until some African-American men cleared the land of those orange groves. And some of those people, their ancestors are still alive and live in the community today. So they are very much a part of the community, and some of their ancestors also built that deck that the city got the grant for. So there's a lot of history, a lot of history in that particular area, even what Gail was talking about, the area across from it. So it's important, it is important to us. So we're hoping that the city commissioners and the manager will help restore some of the history and make that area feel proud and feel that the commission and the City of Eustis does indeed care about their history also.
Ms. Bugs, if you can give me the names of the folks that you do know, then I'll be glad to start looking for the others.
I sure will. And the grant, I understand, was about 1985, and that Alvin Jackson was the city manager at that time, and he is currently an administrator in some other city in Florida.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bugs.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come up? Ron, you've got somebody else?
That's all the cards I have.
Okay. Did someone else want to speak to the commission? Not seeing anybody. We will come down now to our consent agenda. There are seven items on the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to have pulled? No? Not seeing any. Looking for approval of our consent agenda.
Our motion to approve our consent agenda?
Thank you.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. First item is Resolution 1934, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida approving a modification to an approved site plan with waivers for a self-storage facility on approximately 2.69 acres located at 36622 State Road 19A. Mr. Maggiar?
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, Roland Maggiar, Senior Planner for the City of Eustis. Before you is Resolution 1934, modification to the approved site plan for lake warehousing and storage. The applicant is requesting to construct four buildings of 3,000 square feet each for a total of 12,000 square feet, and to request a waiver to allow metal buildings in the general commercial land use. His justification is that the demand for storage space has increased and is greater than expected, the existing buildings on site are all metals, and that the modification meets the land development regs. The site is located at 36622 County Road 19A. It's at the intersection of County Road 19A and State Road 19, an existing facility. Has an existing future land use of general commercial, which does not allow metal buildings, and a existing design district of suburban corridor. History of the site, the existing development of 23,500 square feet was built under Lake County regulations. It was annexed into the city in 2004, and then they also built some additional self-storage spaces with metal buildings to the south of the site in 2005. The land development regs under Section 102-15, major modification, requires that the city approve any modification to a site plan where the floor area is greater than 5 percent, which this is. And then Section 115, 6.1.2, metal buildings prohibits metal buildings in the GC, future land use. So here's the general site location. You can see the four buildings are on the State Road 19 property boundary, the four buildings of buildings of 3,000 square foot each. And here is the elevation of the proposed site. You can see that each building will be broken up by pillars and with different building materials of stucco and lap siding. And there will be also some elevation height between the buildings to kind of make it a little more aesthetically pleasing. In addition, he will be planning some Confederate Jasmine along the fence along State Road 19 to help also hide the buildings and to make it a little more visually pleasant. So when considering this, we looked at the site, and it meets the land development regulations, it meets the FAR requirements of less than 35%. There is, there will be no increase in the impervious surface ratio of the site. It will also meet the commercial lot-type street setback of zero feet, and it will meet the building design criteria of having three or more design standards, varying roof heights, use of vertical breaks such as the columns, and use of different building materials to minimize the mass of the building. The applicant will also provide landscaping when the LDRs exempt the buildings with zero setbacks, so that's an extra benefit. And then the use of stucco and lap siding on the elevations visible from State Road 19. Of course, we noticed the property, and there were, I believe, just one contact, and he was just wanted to know more about the project, and he was not against for or against the project. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the modifications because the modifications meet the code requirements and the applicant is providing building amenities. Are there any questions?
You've got a half a question? Nope.
Any members of the public like to speak on Resolution 1934? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution 1934. What's the will of the commission?
I move that we, this is first hearing, or?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry, resolution, that we approve Resolution number 19-34.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please, Mary.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Resolution 1943, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Florida initiating the process pursuant to Florida statutes 171.203 for negotiating an inter-local service boundary agreement, inviting Lake County to participate, identifying issues to be negotiated, providing directions to the city clerk, and an effective date. Lori Barnes?
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. I'm presenting Resolution 1943, which is the initiating resolution to begin the process of negotiating an inter-local service boundary agreement with Lake County. Development services in recent past has received a number of annexation inquiries. However, the properties that were proposed for annexation would create an enclave upon annexation, which is in direct violation of 171 Part 1 of the Florida statutes. However, with the adoption of an inter-local service boundary agreement with Lake County, Eustace could process annexations even where enclaves are created. The initiating resolution before you identifies issues for negotiation. First... First is to designate the existing joint planning area boundary as the inter-local service boundary area. Second is to address the voluntary annexation of contiguous properties, including annexation that creates enclaves. Third is to comply with the county's E91 addressing standards, which is a request the county has been making throughout the previous ISBA processes. So the ISBA process includes preparation of the initiating resolution. If the commission adopts that initiating resolution, Lake County will have 60 days to adopt a responding resolution. At that time, Eustace and Lake County would proceed to negotiate the agreement, followed by adoption of an inter-local service boundary agreement ordinance. Commission has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions? Would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution 1943? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution 19-43. What's the will of the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution number 1943.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
The first reading ordinance is 1903, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Florida voluntarily annexing approximately 10.97 acres of real property located at East Bates Avenue 1,200 feet east of East County Road 44 and 1706 Virginia Avenue in Eustace, Florida. Mr. Maggiar?
Hello again, Roland Maggiar, Senior Planner. Before you are three ordinances, 1903 for the annexation, 1904 for the future land use map, and 1905 for the design district. Our presentation will incorporate all of those, and you will have to vote separately on each ordinance. So the three properties total approximately 10.97 acres. The two owned by Frost and Fish are approximately a little over five acres apiece. And they are requesting future land uses of suburban residential for the ones on Bates and urban residential on Virginia Avenue, with the design districts all being suburban neighborhood. The locations on the Bates property are east of East County Road 44, and the Virginia Avenue is to the west of those two sites. So the evaluation of the request for annexation, the joint planning area agreement with Lake County states that the site is within the JPA, and there are adequate urban services available. Florida statutes voluntary annexation, that the sites must be contiguous to the city limits, notice provided to Lake County, notice advertised twice in two consecutive weeks, and the annexation begins to close the gap of the city's natural growth boundaries. The future land use request is per Chapter 163, 3177.9. The future, future land use element, the appendix, it meets those requirements, and also the requirements of Chapter 102 of land development regs. So here, we see the comparison of the county future land use and the city land use. It goes from urban low for the Bates Avenue properties and urban medium to, for the county properties, to suburban residential and urban residential as shown. In the evaluation of that request, the city future land use of suburban residential is five dwelling units per acre and is primarily designed for single-family duplex and town homes, where the county future land use from urban low and agricultural zoning is four dwelling units per acre with residential office and limited commercial with an FAR of .25. For the Virginia Avenue property, the city future land use is urban residential, which is 12 dwelling units per acre, which is single-family to multifamily, and the county is urban medium, which is seven dwelling units per acre with uses of residential office and limited commercial. So when we review the future land use, it is consistent with the surrounding future land use designations and established development pattern. This SR and UR designations are more intense than the Lake County urban low and urban medium, which is expected when changing from an unincorporated county land use to a municipal urban land use. Again, evaluation of the future land use, the general public facilities and services, the facilities and capacity to serve the existing development and maximum development potential is there. The natural resources, the Virginia Avenue site is a already developed and is a vacant lot now. However, the Bates Avenue are wooded sites and basically could be cleared for future development. Transportation and water supply, the transportation levels of service can accommodate the new developments, and the water supply and capacity is available for all the sites. Again, the comprehensive plan review is consistent with the existing future land use and comprehensive plan. In the evaluation for the design districts, all properties would be designated suburban neighborhood. This is consistent and compatible and meets the definition of the surrounding properties. The county, which does not have a design district designation, city design districts meet the code of suburban neighborhood, which are predominantly residential with limited commercial services. We noticed the properties twice for the annexation and then individually for the comprehensive plan and the design district with a notification to the county and also the surrounding property owners. There were a few phone calls wondering what was going on. Most of the people thought their properties were being annexed, but we had to tell them that they were just within the 500 feet. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested annexation is consistent with the JPA and Florida statutes. The annexation would increase the tax base of the city and increase the annual operating revenues, and the proposed designations are compatible, consistent with the Eustace Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. Any questions?
Just one, it seems to be a bit more density than is currently there. I think they're all single-family homes, I went through there, so the, on the Virginia one.
Right. Basically, there's really not enough land to build any multifamily, not even a quarter acre.
Okay. And then the other location?
Those are basically five, a little over five acre tracts, and they would be able to build up to their density based upon, so that would be a maximum, a theoretical maximum of 25 dwelling units, five times five. And, but according to the owners, they're probably going to build a maximum of two homes per lot.
Oh, in the five lots, two homes?
They were, they were anticipating just building single families for themselves, and then maybe splitting it to build a second home on the, on the lots.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 1903?
Mr. Rohrbach, are you still here?
Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 19-03. What's the will of the commission?
I make a motion that we approve, is this the first reading?
Yes.
On first reading, Ordinance number 19-03.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1904, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Lake County, Florida amending the City of Eustace Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use designation of 10.97 acres of recently annexed real property located at East Bates Avenue 1,200 feet east of East County Road 44 from urban low in Lake County to suburban residential SR in 1706 Virginia Avenue, from urban medium in Lake County to urban residential in the city of Eustace. Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 1904? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
I just have a question, where is 17... Sorry, Gail.
I didn't see you. Sorry.
Where is 1706 Virginia Avenue?
Roland's gonna show you.
Okay, because I rode down Virginia and I couldn't find it.
It's on the west side of the school.
Okay.
It was hard to find.
Yeah, Elsie. Okay, so the school is, there's the school right there?
Yes.
And that's Elsie coming up here?
Yes. Okay.
And it's just right there in the corner, it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Ms. Gail?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 19-04. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1905, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Lake County, Florida assigning the suburban neighborhood design district designation to approximately 10.97 acres of real property located at East Bates Avenue, 1,200 feet of East County Road 44 and 1706 Virginia Avenue, Eustace, Florida. Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 1905? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 19-05. What's the will of the commission?
All right, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1906, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Florida voluntarily annexing approximately .19 acres of real property located at 443 Ohio Boulevard, Eustace, Florida. Mr. Maggiar?
Roland Maggiar, Senior Planner, again. The proposed ordinances, 1906, the annexation, 1907, the future land use, and 1908, the design district, is one property at 443 Ohio Boulevard, requesting suburban residential, future land use, and suburban neighborhood design district. It's located south of Orange Avenue on Ohio Boulevard, filling in part of the enclave area in that part of the town. In the review, we're gonna take a look at the annexation, and again, the joint planning area agreement is with Lake County, is within that site, and that there are adequate urban services. Florida statutes voluntary annexation, the site is contiguous to the city, notice has been provided to the county, notice advertised twice in the newspaper, and annexation begins to close the gap in the city's natural growth boundary. Future land use is reviewed per Chapter 163, 3177.9. It's also looked at for the future land use element appendix and per Chapter 102. So again, we look at the current, or the city future land use of the suburban residential is five dwelling units per acre, primarily for single-family duplex and town homes, whereas the county urban low is four dwelling units and is a transitional land use to residential. So it is consistent with the surrounding future land use designations and established development patterns. The site, by the way, is already developed as a single-family home. The SR designation is more intense than the Lake County's urban low and urban medium, which is expected when changing from a county land use to a municipal land use. There are public facilities and services available to meet the demand. The natural resources, well, nothing will be accomplished if it's already developed. The transportation and water supply, everything is met because it's already developed, and it is consistent with the existing future land use and comprehensive plan. For the design district, it is going to go to suburban neighborhood, which is the surrounding properties, which is consistent, compatible, and meets the definition of suburban neighborhood. Again, we noticed in the paper twice for the annexation and then individually for the future land use map and the design district, and we also did the 500-foot surrounding property owners, and there were no for or against requests. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request, that the requested annexation is consistent with the JPA and Florida statutes. The annexation would increase the tax base of the city, increase the annual operating revenues, and the proposed designation is compatible and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Development, Land Development Regulations. Any questions?
Seeing none, would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 1906? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 19-06. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1907, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Lake County, Florida amending the City of Eustace Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use designation of... the future land use designation of .19 acres of recently annexed real property located at 443 Ohio Boulevard, from urban medium in Lake County to suburban residential in the City of Eustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 1907? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Messers before us, we have ordinance 19-07. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1908, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the suburban neighborhood design district designation to approximately .19 acres of real property located at 443 Ohio Boulevard, Eustis, Florida. Any members of the public on ordinance 1908 like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Messers before us, we have ordinance 19-08. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1909, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing 1.19 acres of real property located at 2400 South Bay Street, 200 West Seminole Road, and 143 West Dixie Avenue, and 2500 South Bay Street in Eustis, Florida. Mr. Maguire.
Commissioners and mayor, Roland Maguire, staff planner. Before you is ordinance 1909, the annexation, 1910, future land use map, and 1911, design district. The applicants for the property are English Smith, Rodriguez, and the North River LLC and Mr. Tyre. The annexation of four properties totaling approximately 1.19 acres. Basically, the South Bay annexations are going to, are requesting general commercial with an urban design district of urban corridor, and the other two are requesting suburban residential, with one being suburban neighborhood and the 143 West Dixie being urban neighborhood. These are the locations of the properties. You can see one and two are, is 2400 and 2500 South Bay. Number three is 200 South, I'm sorry, West Seminole, and number four is on the West Dixie So for the annexation, the joint, the areas are within the joint planning area agreement with Lake County, and the site is within the JPA with adequate urban services. Per Florida statute, for voluntary annexations, the sites are contiguous to the city. Notice has been provided to Lake County, notice advertised twice, two consecutive weeks, and the annexation begins to close the gap in the city's natural growth boundaries. For the future land use, we reviewed chapter 163, 3177.9, and also the future land use element appendix and per chapter 102, and they meet the requirements of those rules. The requested change for 2400 and 2500, again, it's urban low, from urban low to general commercial. The city's general commercial has a four-area ratio, .35, which allows a commercial office and general services. The county future land use is urban low, which allows six dwelling units per acre, single and multifamily with limited naval commercial but at a higher FAR .5. For the other two properties, the city future land use of suburban residential is five dwelling units per acre, single-family and duplexes, where the county urban low is four dwelling units and is a transition to residential. All these properties are already developed, by the way, with either two houses or on the Bay Street, two businesses. So the future land use, the properties are consistent with the surrounding future land use designations and established patterns. The SR and GC designations are equivalent to the Lake County urban low in their zoning. Again, for evaluation of the request for future land use, there is facilities and capacity to serve these properties, which are already developed. There will be no natural resource or natural features because they are developed. Again, the transportation and water supply is adequate, and they are consistent with the existing future land use and comprehensive plan. For the design districts, they are consistent and compatible to meet the definitions. For city design, the suburban and urban neighborhood, predominantly residential with limited commercial services, and the urban corridor are generally linear auto-oriented commercial, which they are, all meet. Again, we advertised twice for the annexation and then individually for the future land use and the design district, and then, of course, the 500-foot surrounding property owners, and there were no for or against communications. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the annexations, future land use, and design districts. The requested annexation is consistent with JPA and the Florida statutes. The annexation would increase the tax base and the city annual operating revenues, and the proposed designations are compatible and consistent with the future land use plan and the development regulations. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 1909? Mr. Munsma.
Press, Munsma, 3312 Indian Trail, Eustis, Florida. Point of order, I don't know how the ordinance is written, but on the agenda, 1909 refers to 143 West Dixie. 1910 and 1911 refer to 143 West Dixie.
Any other members of the public care to speak on ordinance 1909? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Messers before us, we have ordinance 1909. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm just not guessing anything.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1910, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use designation of approximately 1.19 acres of real property located at 2400 South Bay Street and 2500 South Bay Street, from urban low in Lake County to general commercial GC and 200 East Seminole Road and 143 West Dixie Avenue, from urban low in Lake County to suburban residential SR in the City of Eustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 1910? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Messers before us, we have ordinance 1910. What's the will of the commission?
And it does say Dixie in the actual ordinance.
In the actual ordinance, it does.
Ms. Vice Mayor?
Move to approve ordinance number 1910.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1911, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the suburban neighborhood, urban neighborhood and urban corridor design district designations to approximately 1.19 acres of real property located at 2400 South Bay Street, 200 East Seminole Road, 143 West Dixie Avenue, and 2500 South Bay Street, Eustis, Florida. Any members of the public wish to speak on 1911? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Messers before us, we have ordinance 19-11. What's the will of the commission?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 1912, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the land development regulations. Chapter 109, section 109-4, use regulations table to allow mobile vendors in the central business district, CBD, with a conditional use permit, approval subject to certain conditions, and to eliminate single-family attached as a permitted use in the mixed commercial industrial district, providing for codification, severability, and an effective date. Ms. Lori Barnes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Development Services Director. I'm presenting a proposed amendment to the land development regulations. Ordinance 1912. The proposed ordinance includes three amendments. Two relate to the central business district. The first, to clarify the permissibility of mobile vendors during events, and the second, to provide for food trucks under certain conditions with a conditional use permit approval by the City Commission. The third amendment eliminates an inconsistency regarding residential uses in the mixed commercial industrial land use designation. Again, the first amendment clarifies that mobile vendors are permitted on a limited basis in conjunction with city-sponsored events or city-sanctioned events. The second amendment provides an opportunity to incorporate food trucks into the operation of brick-and-mortar eating or drinking establishments in the central business district. Applicants who meet codified conditions can request City Commission approval of a conditional use permit to include food trucks in their business operation. According to a report from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, the food truck industry grew at an average rate of 7.9% per year since 2011. Across the nation, in many states, Texas, Oregon, Ohio, Tennessee, Pennsylvania, Colorado, and more, food truck parks, bars with food trucks, indoor food truck courts are bringing people together for community dining, socializing, creative arts, and gaming. We have a video of a collaborative in the city of Boulder. This demonstrates the concept intended to be supported by the proposed regulations but not the actual design of a Eustis facility. Any facility in Eustis would be controlled by the land development regulations and would be at a scale consistent with the surrounding area. In my office, this came up just like that.
I think you probably have to be in the presentation. This is like editing slides. I think you have to go to the, you can't do it in there. Turn on the slideshow. I think if you click on the slideshow and go to the slideshow itself.
At the bottom, the one on the right. Right? Bottom right, slideshow.
Somewhere there.
Something slipped.
There you go. The picture's worth a thousand words.
Thank you so much for your patience.
People here love the mountains. They come from all walks of life. People here love a good brew and killer food. They love the sunshine and the snow. Dreams are unrestrained in Boulder, and ours was to create a place, a community that embodies everything about the people. The Rayback Collective is a bar, a food truck park, a live music venue, a backyard party, and it's here, in the foothills of the Rocky Mountains, for you. You are leaders and dreamers, students, young at heart, artists, musicians, dancers. That's what makes Boulder so special. And what about the Rayback? What makes the Rayback so special? You.
In Florida, entrepreneurs and cities have found unique ways to incorporate trucks into their business plans. The A La Carte is a food truck venue operating in Orlando. This video highlights the A La Carte operation. It brings you a little bit closer to home and shows a smaller-scale venue. Food truck parks are also operating in St. Augustine, the Village Garden, in Naples at a location called Celebration Park, which is not a city park, by the way. It is a privately-owned venue, and in Jacksonville and as well as other cities across Florida. If the commission were to adopt the ordinance, including food trucks in the central business district, proposed food truck operations would be required to obtain a conditional use permit. In this way, staff and the commission can review a request to confirm compliance with the codified conditions. Food truck parks are also operating in St. Augustine, the Village Garden, in Naples at a location called Celebration Park, which is not a city park, by the way. It is a privately-owned venue. And in Jacksonville, and as well as other cities across Florida. If the Commission were to adopt the ordinance, including food trucks in the Central Business District, proposed food truck operations would be required to obtain a conditional use permit. In this way, staff in the Commission can review a request to confirm compliance with the codified conditions and to focus on specific site characteristics that may need special attention or prompt the imposition of conditions. Additionally... Additionally, this process assures that should the city receive a conditional use permit request for food trucks, that the surrounding property owners and the public are notified and will have an opportunity to voice their support or opposition at public hearings. Again, it's an ordinance with two readings before the City Commission, five-hundred-foot notification and signs posted on the site, as well as an ad placed in the newspaper for the ordinance. The process includes a submittal of an application, a detailed site plan, and an eight-hundred-dollar application fee. An applicant for this type of CUP would be required to submit additional information for the food trucks to comply, confirm compliance with the codified conditions, and the application must specify the number of food trucks proposed. And that could be placed as a limitation in the CUP ordinance. The process includes review by the Development Review Committee, which, as you know, includes staff from all of the city departments, water, wastewater, building, engineering, planning, et cetera. The DRC may request revisions to an applicant's plan, and we may advise them of conditions that we will be recommending to the City Commission. As part of the agenda item, there is always a reference on our applications that go before DRC about the DRC review and the recommendation. As I mentioned earlier, a CUP requires two readings before the City Commission, and the Commission may attach additional conditions or limitations on the business operation to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area. The final amendment included in the ordinance before you addresses an inconsistency in the use table and would remove single-family attached uses from the permitted uses in mixed commercial industrial. Staff recommends approval. We find that the amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. It clarifies the permissibility of mobile vendors at city and city-sanctioned events in the Central Business District. The City Commission would still be required to approve any food truck operations in conjunction with an eating or drinking establishment in the Central Business District. And finally, it eliminates the inconsistency in mixed commercial industrial. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I can mention a procedural item. There are three items on this ordinance. Some may be of more interest to you than others. The first and third item are just procedural changes. If there's any concerns with the second items that may incline you not to be in favor of that and pass that on, I would ask that you deal with that separately as an amendment to this ordinance, so that the other two items, if you are in favor of those, could be passed on to second reading.
Mission, have any questions of Lori?
Just a comment. That was well done. I know you had a little problems with the video and stuff, but very well done. I understand it, which is great to understand. No questions.
Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance nineteen twelve? Pamela Rivas?
You know, actually, I'll wait if there's...
I take it in order, so...
Pam, while you're coming up, I think the Vice Mayor had a question.
Well, it's not a question. Thank you for including the sample ordinance. Because that's what I was looking for. I was looking for something that would tell me what, as a Commissioner, I would be looking for in making these decisions. So, the sample food truck ordinance was very much appreciated. Thank you. I'm glad that it helped.
Thank you, Lori. Pam, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and special welcome. Nice to meet you. My name is Pam Rivas. I live at seven fifty-one Omongoro Road. And I thought that was a great presentation. I love the visual aids. I just wanted to say, I've been to some of these food parks, one in Jacksonville, the one in Orlando. And they're called culinary parks, not just food parks. And they're really neat in the concept that they do create a community environment. They are like an incubator for entrepreneurs who are trying to get on their feet and create a business. They don't take away from what is already established. They add flavor to the area. I feel like one of the things in our town that we're lacking is more diversity and more businesses, more to attract more traffic. And this is a nice way. I mean, in a small parcel, you can get four or five additional restaurants, if you think about it, but they're, you know, the food trucks. So, four or five additional flavors, you know, different cuisines. The ones that, the A La Carte that she showed, they are really innovative as far as their events, too. They have outdoor events, they have charity events, they have, they host weddings in there, they also do movie nights, so game nights. It's really community-active, which is nice. What?
Weddings?
Yeah. Yeah, like little wedding venues, reception areas, yeah. I was reading an article how the city of New York did this, and then Orlando adopted it, that they use these venues to divert traffic from heavily populated areas. Like, New York did it from Midtown to get people to go to Bryant Park. They created one of these venues. Orlando did it to take people from Orange Avenue, because it was so heavily trafficked there, to bring it into areas that didn't have as much traffic. So, it was a nice way to draw people into areas. So, we have a lot of restaurants out on four forty-one. How can we get more people just to keep coming, keep coming downtown? You know, to, and then they will enjoy all the other restaurants and businesses that we have. So, it's a nice way to drive traffic to areas, which I think is something that we really need. The other thing is, too, that I really think is a plus for it, is with it, with our park and our breweries, it creates a, you know, they don't have to eat in that area. They can actually go out and enjoy the sunset. They can grab their food and go, you know, or they could go get, but, you know, they may not want to get, they don't have beers. These places don't have beers, so they can go sit down, have a beer over at Tilly's and enjoy a beer there, and then go over and grab something to snack on, not necessarily eat. So, it's a nice, it gives everybody part of the atmosphere, includes everybody. Any questions?
Thank you, Pam.
All right.
Pressman's May?
I was hoping you would say something about this.
Pressman's May, thirty-three twelve, Indian Trail, Eustis, Florida. How y'all doing again tonight? I could not believe this when I read it. Unfortunately, I'm not the enthusiastic supporter of this. I think it may be one of the dumbest ideas we've had in a long time. Let me tell you why. Yesterday afternoon, I had to pick up a prescription at Bay Pharmacy, and I had to park up by the Alterations Place. And so, I walked down Magnolia. And you know how many businesses are open between the corner of Magnolia and Bay? Two. Mary's Jewelers, eighteen eighty-four. That's it. Nobody else there. Cross the street. You know how many businesses are on the other side of the street? Two. Restaurants. Out of four businesses that are on that side of that street, three of them are restaurants. One of the restaurant owners has three restaurants in town. Commissioner Moore asked a question when the city leased the building down there by the park, the Tilly's, for the pizza place. And he said, "I wouldn't put my money in there." Who would invest in that? This guy's taking a heck of a risk. So, he took the risk. I think he's doing okay. He's smiling back there. And then Nancy reads to me on Facebook, because I haven't figured that out yet, that he's going to open up another restaurant where ladies used to be. In this particular town, the only industry that is alive is the restaurant industry. The reason that only 2.7 percent growth in the restaurant industry there compared to whatever number it was that Lori threw up there was that average food truck costs thirty thousand dollars. You can talk to Tilly to find out what it cost him to open his restaurants. When I opened restaurants, my average restaurant cost me three point one million dollars. I can only envision, well, I can't actually envision in the Central Business District, but one or two properties that this would benefit. Because if not, someone's got to buy an empty piece of property, build a facility to be able to have food eaten in it and restrooms in it to allow this to happen. It just seems odd to me that in trying to make economic development, we grasp at these, which I would call straws. There, think about the tax base. Think about the taxes paid by a restaurant.
Three minutes, Mayor.
That's a permanent building. Think about the taxes and the property taxes that are paid by the food truck. If the food truck's lease space to the person that owns this facility, who puts this in there, they don't pay any property tax. And the property that gets taxed doesn't get taxed as a restaurant. It gets taxed as a piece of property with this building on it. So, I would ask you to really, really think through this. It does not appear to me to be the appropriate thing for the city of Eustis. We can't even have a list of the top ten restaurants, because we don't have ten restaurants. In Boulder, Colorado, where this works really well, there's about twelve hundred restaurants.
Thank you.
I would just ask you to think through that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rodrigo Marocco?
Just taking a second, sorry.
It's all right. Take your time.
I sat here this morning, and I just didn't want to pass on the opportunity to be good today.
Lori, would you hand him the handheld microphone, please?
I can get it up.
You're fine.
Would you stay with Rodrigo?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. I am a new resident of Eustis. First of all, I'm a father and a husband, two young girls.
What's your name?
My name is Rodrigo Marocco. You can hear me better now. I wrote down the stuff that I want to talk, so I hope you guys don't mind. We recently moved to Eustis with a goal in mind to open a new local business. We're looking to bring in a new type of dining experience, which includes a beer garden with interior and outside seating, and food trucks as a source of food for our patrons. Food trucks generate a big following through social media and bring the following that will bring additional people to the city from different locations. We see food trucks as a phenomenon and as an opportunity to draw foodies and the cultural curious to our community. These visitors are often seeking new ways to invest their time and money. People enjoy food trucks for a number of reasons. Quick bite, an expensive run, to sample flavored local and exotic food in a social setting, to experience new ethnic cuisines, and to support entrepreneurs, small business owners, and local vendors. Restaurants and food trucks have the potential to work in a beautiful relationship with everybody just taking a minute and see how we can work together. Restaurant owners may fear their potential customers are being taken away by smaller food providers on wheels, but this is simply not the case. We would be interested in partnering up with local restaurants and introduce some sort of referral program, prop crawls, or even events, which we could work together to maximize profits. Places like Wolf Branch bring fifty-plus people a week from different types of locations in different cities. We've talked to many individuals, and the consensus is the same. There's not enough food options available in this area. People are having to travel from the villages to Orlando and hope to find establishments like these. One of the main reasons Mandora is successful is because there are over thirty eating establishments in the downtown area. We recognize that while food truck owners may not pay property taxes, they do generate other tax revenues, and they do contribute to the community in other ways, including by adding to the fabric of the community and patronizing other local businesses. Orlando is one of the top five cities in the growth of food trucks, and it's because the regulations that they have and how they've been able to work together with establishments like ours. I found a report online called "Think Mobile, Act Local: The Future of Mobile Food in America," which states, "Mobile food fosters social cohesion, connection, and understanding in physical spaces by providing a spontaneous gathering place where people connect with one another. And urban development evolves and changes, so do policies and regulations that manage the development, and the growth of the food truck industry is no different in this regard." Communities like ours, with their high influx of seasonal visitors, will certainly be viewed as a logical partner for future food trucks operations.
If you just go ahead and start finishing up for me.
Definitely. While food trucks may be less of an idea for a busy shopping corridor adjacent to a corridor or next to a brick-and-mortar restaurant, I think this will be a great for what we're trying to do with our city and help it grow.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
George Esposito?
Mr. George?
Mr. Mayor? Hi, my name is George Esposito. Ms. Lee, welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to have you. I really wanted to share some of my experience, not necessarily take a specific thought on it. When I first heard about this food truck thing, I'll use a word that one of the local business guys told me, and that's the wild, wild west coming to Eustis. That a food truck is in front of my restaurant, on the other side of my restaurant, that slap trunk, trunk slamming, people coming and busting into our town, and I don't want that. And that's not what I think Eustis's future is, should be. And then, I took it upon myself, along with my beautiful lady, to take a ride down to Orlando to try to understand exactly what this is. I had a little conversation with Ms. Barnes and went down to the A La Carte off of fifty in the new up-and-coming Milk District, it's called, in Orlando. And we went there for just a couple of minutes, because we had to do some things. We ended up staying there two and a half hours. We watched families come in, we watched a movie going on, and we saw people dressed in long sleeves coming home from work, high-income people. What I saw, we looked at the cars, it's the kind of things that I do, looked at the cars out in the parking lot, and I was impressed with what was there. It is not a food truck. The biggest injustice that it gives is the word "food truck." I really think they should take the food truck out. It is a outside mall that they are cooking in a trailer, a food truck. I think it adds to the atmosphere of it, but it is not anything like you could imagine. If you watch that video up over there, it is every bit of that. And I turned three hundred and sixty degrees on how the thought is. I do not want food trucks in the corner. I don't want a food truck in front of Crazy Gator on the other side of, those guys are the staple of how we've been rebuilding this city. Tilly's, Randy, I know the pizza place Sandy, I don't really know her, but these are people who have invested through the bad days, and they deserve our respect and understanding. But we also need to listen to them as well as explain what this is. And it's a very deceiving process. It's a very deceiving title. So, the best thing about it is that it has to come back up for review each time, and it has to get your approval, and that we'll see a plan. The gentleman that was just up here before me, I would have loved to know, you know, what he's thinking, what he's doing, where, you know, what kind of food was he planning to have in there? Where would it be? Would it be confined? And these are beginnings for entrepreneurs who might then turn into a regular establishment as well. So, this is a trendy up-and-coming. I'm not a trendy guy. I come here in shorts. I come here in my shirts. And so, trend is what we need to look to, or we'll be stuck back in the errors from before. So, I'll defer my actual recommendation to Tilly or Randy or Sandy to make their opinion. I respect their restaurant and thank them for being here.
Thank you, George.
It's all the cards in here.
I know we've got some restaurant owners out there. Anybody want to talk? Anybody want to talk? Tilly? Randy? Sandy? I see you out there.
Dan's here. Dan's here too.
Yeah, Dan.
Randy's going to be the sacrificial lamb.
Hey, Randy.
Hey, everybody. Congratulations, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
I'm pretty unprepared for this. I'm kind of learning about this probably before 5 o'clock. So these are some of my questions, some of my concerns for food trucks coming in. As I know them, they all are pick-up-and-leave. They come, they pay their $50 permit fee, whatever it is, hit the door, hit the go, they're gone. Every festival we go to, I'm just one of those people, and I know I'm a little bit farther down, so it doesn't really affect me that much. But I do feel 1884, Tilly, his new place, California Pizza, the Gyro Place, there's not enough traffic for this. The festival should feed into downtown Eustis. That's what we, when I, what, five, seven years ago, downtown Eustis was dead. Till 1884 came in and built it, Tilly opened. There wasn't a lot of activity, so I still don't see a lot of activity when these functions come in. They don't really feed down into the people that really support. I'm a city supporter. Whenever they walk through the door, whatever they need, donations, money, we support. I don't know the food truck business well that much, but I don't see that happening from them. I don't see you guys going door-to-door to them on a Saturday function saying, hey, listen, we need some gift certificates, we need some sponsor money. Where do you guys sit on this? They'll be like, well, we'll see you next week, for the most part. You know, I don't want to say anything bad about these people, because I don't know them. But I know they're, you know, I mean, we have Department of Health on us, we have the state. They get to come, go, Department of Health, they don't work on Saturdays. So I don't know, I don't know what kind of food comes into these places. I have no idea. Just my opinion. They might be Taj Mahal nice inside, super clean, food, everything. Don't know. Just, just, just my outside opinion right now. I don't want to put down these people. You know, they're, you know, entrepreneurs just like we are. We all want to pass the sex, the successful businesses, but these are just some of my, you know, I just, I, you know, mobile competition, they're, they're not, they're not permanent, are they? They come and go. So they'll come in, the function will be there. You know, I just, I, I'm pulling more for the downtown district, more for myself, because not many people, when they do the functions, not many people really walk that far to come down to Crazy Gator. They filter into Tilly's and 1884 and so on. So those are just my, just those are just my concerns. I love the youth, the growth of Eustis. I think they're doing super things. You know, the video's nice. I've watched nice videos on the internet too, and I went to that place and it absolutely was not anything on the video. But that's just my opinion. So I think that's all I have to say.
Lori, can you address any of Randy's concerns? I saw you kind of make some emotions there.
And I hope, I'm not trying to disrespect nobody.
We're trying, no, we're trying to learn also, Randy, so, no.
Did you get a chance to look at the sample ordinance that would come before the commission?
I know about this meeting about 5 o'clock. So I'm somewhat in on it, I'm involved, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I will try to address some of the questions, or at least what I think I heard. So the... The ordinance doesn't propose allowing food trucks just anywhere in the central business district. And it does not propose creating a place where food trucks can come in and out at will. It proposes a CUP application for a primary business operator who has a brick-and-mortar eating or drinking establishment, or both. And that business owner will either own and/or manage the food trucks that come to their site. So they may have one permanent food truck that's theirs, and then they may rotate out different food trucks so that different flavors can come in. But they have an agreement with that food truck to come to their site, to offer their food, to follow the rules of the primary establishment. The other question I heard was about paying a $50 fee and being here today, gone tomorrow. The CUP is an $800 application fee. If a prospective business owner were looking at renovating an existing facility, they would need to apply for change-of-use permits, renovate the interior to comply with code, especially ADA. They'd need to go through an administrative site plan review in addition to the conditional use permit, pay their business tax receipt, obtain their state license for the eating and/or drinking establishment. So there is a lot more to the operation type being proposed by this ordinance than a food truck coming in and parking on the street and selling their food.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry. Chris, what he's done, you can come up, okay? Thank you.
I'm Dan Laggie, owner of The Wine Cellars, non-cork here in town. I haven't been here as long as some of the other established businesses, but I think we do a pretty good job. My concerns are what she just said about, it sounds like, again, I don't know all the facts, but if she's saying that there is one entity that is in charge of this location for the mobile vehicles to come in and out, because I think that's what she just said unless I heard it wrong, is who controls that if that becomes an issue with the trailers, basically, the food trucks coming in and out? As far as the quality of food, quality of service? I don't want to get a bad reputation. As Eustis, we are not in Orlando, we're not at Denver, we're not a large corp, large city that maybe can handle this. We're a small city, we need to be careful what we do, that we don't try to exceed what our limitations are going to have. My thought is that if they do do this, what site are they going to go to? I don't think that's been really established, has it? Where are they going to put this? Does anybody know?
That would be handled on a case. Alls we're doing now is setting up an ordinance to allow it and allow a process by which each individual owner would be reviewed. So there are no specific applications.
Okay.
So each site that would be approved for food trucks would have its own individual review process.
Would this be a city site that you're letting them use or buying something?
No, no, no. This would be a private site owned by a private individual that they would allow a food truck, one or two, to come on their property. So it has to be a food truck, put on a private piece of property in conjunction with an established building that has appropriate dining facilities and restroom facilities.
Then again, are we going back to that person that owns the property? Is going to be in charge of making sure that they're people that are using the facilities? In other words, the food trucks, that's the person that's going to be responsible for monitoring those food trucks to make sure they're all upscale and...
Well, they'll, they'll approve the trucks that come onto their property. Now, the health department will review for health and safety issues, just like any other fixed restaurant.
Well, again, I'm concerned that, like, you know, the food trucks that I've seen and have been associated with do come and go, and I don't, I don't feel confident without any control of the come and go. If somebody else is monitoring or overseeing this other than the city, I'm hesitant on that to begin with. Number two, I don't think it's good for the brick-and-mortar. I mean, I had to spend a lot of money to be able to open a business. I mean, mine was not even a restaurant before I started. It was a shop. I had to put a lot of money into that thing to get it going. And I'm sure Tilly's put out a ton of money. All of us have had brick-and-mortar. And now we're going to have the food trucks come in, and it's going to take away from the business. It isn't bring some in, but it's going to take away more than what it's going to bring, in my opinion.
Thank you. Do you have something, Lori?
I just thought I might have a simple way to explain. For example, if Wolf Branch Brewing, Wolf Branch Brewing does not sell food. They brew beer, they sell beer. If Wolf Branch Brewing wanted to apply for a conditional use permit to have a food truck on their site, which there would be room in the rear of the building, this ordinance would provide the opportunity for Jose to make that type of request if he wanted to have an opportunity for his patrons to grab a taco, or Asian noodle bowl, or whatever type of food truck vendor he wished to allow on his property. Now, that business owner, if that food truck is not providing good food, good service, et cetera, is not going to invite that food truck back. But they may want to have two or three rotating food trucks. So once a month, they change it up so people can have a different flavor. They can try different food. So maybe that will help explain the concept a little bit better.
Well, and I think also, one of the things in the ordinance is that they can't be generated. Generator run, they have to have a power source. And we also, through the CUP, can limit no more than one food truck at a time, depending upon the location. So again, I really invite you to look at the sample ordinance that was put in there because there are a lot of conditions that have to be met, and every case is looked at separately. Thank you.
Chris?
I'm just trying to understand how this is supposed to work in my mind. So in fact, Tilly, if you wanted to not open a seafood restaurant or a steak restaurant there, could get a food truck at his current Mexican pizza restaurant that serves seafood?
No. He's got, he doesn't have private property to support the location of a truck.
Okay. So as long as the city property, you can't do that. It has to be private property.
Correct. And it has to be on the same property as the prime building that will support the dining and restroom areas.
Okay, and so...
Can't be parked in the street.
Okay, and so Wolf Branch has...
Behind it.
Kind of. Behind it, oh, okay, all right, okay. Sorry, hon, I'm, you can't talk and I can't hear. All right, so that's an understanding then. So someone would not be able to take the art museum building.
No, because it's city.
Rent it from the city.
It's city-owned.
Pardon me? I know, but if they rented it?
No.
Okay. So you have to be owned by the person, all right. So the only piece of property that works really well for that is the one across the street from the city building there. Jack Prickett could do that in that building over there. It looks like a little gas station.
Well, I was even thinking the place on the corner of Lake Shore Drive and Bay Street? You know, that two-story?
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's, that's kind of cool because it has the inner court already.
Okay. The other concern I had was, we're a town that doesn't want to put metal buildings up anymore, but yet we're all considering the possibility of putting trailers and trucks that you don't really know how they're going to look when they show up on the corner of...
That's why it's a CUP.
But then, okay, and I hear what you're saying, but think about the work that you're generating for some staff or you to approve every time a truck changes, what it looks like, whether it fits the scheme or it doesn't.
Lori, I don't think the intent was to review every truck. It was just to review the overall site. And the idea is that the owner of the property would, would rotate the trucks in and out at their own discretion.
So you have no control over the trucks, most?
Correct. We, and we don't have, and we don't have appearance standards for anything, really. So obviously, health and safety, I mean...
You do have appearance standards for a lot of things. The form of function is the basis of how we do the...
Sandy, come on up. Thank you for being here. I know it's in the middle of your busy time.
I'm a little bit longer than usual. I'm Sandy Johnson. I own a pizza shop since 2008. I'm one of the oldest in town. A few years ago, the city did an event where they brought food trucks in. I know Greg Mack was all into that. At the time, I was totally against that. And it was, it was like an event, it was a food truck event. And I said, okay, let's see what happens. Believe it or not, it actually brought me business, and I'll tell you why. Because their pricing was too high, and the food didn't look very good, okay? That happened a couple of times, and then it went away. So my concern with this one is, of course, Wolf Branch Brewery could not have a food truck on their site because they're on, the only place they could park would be behind, which is to be property. So it has to be a privately-owned property, but you're saying in CBD, central business district, which is downtown, which is where we're at. And I don't see too many buildings there that is available for something like that. The brick-and-mortar thing, yes, you know, I mean, we pay taxes, we pay, you know, health inspections, you know, fire inspections, you know, we have to pay off the police. I take them pizzas, okay? Anyway, I'm not against it, but it does not make any sense to me. Absolutely does not make any sense to me. And that's a giant application fee, you know? And if I paid $800, I would want to be there at least six months. And God help them, hope he hasn't, you know, has enough traffic for six months. It's, it's just, it's just a weird, weird concept to me. Okay, we're not, I mean, it'd be different if you were trying to recreate a food truck event like these. I see a lot of churches doing it. They have a food truck event, and they have it in their parking lot once every couple of months. And it brings revenue for them because food trucks have to pay them to be there. So events like that are okay. Permanent fixture, I'm not so sure.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for speaking. Tilly, you're the only one that hadn't said anything. Come on up here.
What do you give, what do you give the crowd, Tilly?
My permission, however, you guys don't know me. I'm James Tilkus, Tilly. I own a couple of restaurants here, restaurants. It looks like what I've seen almost every restaurateur's been here except for 1884 tonight. And I don't know the new owner, so I don't know if he's here or not. I was dead against everything when I heard it. Still going back and forth because I want to learn. But, I mean, I look at what's here and what our city is, and, you know, really, you guys are going to make the best decisions for us. We're voicing our opinion, what we think. And I don't want to be the man that's going to be here and either sway or slam or crap on everything that's going on, excuse my language. But it's just, the biggest thing is just that what everybody's saying, the time, the money, even with the people that own the building that would turn these into establishments, is just what's going to be the best for the city. Because I can sit here and just scream about it all in a negative way, or I could scream it all the way in a positive way. But, you know, it's just, it's hard for me to go back and forth because I hear, I heard it all negative, then I hear it some positive. But in the long run, everybody that invests in buildings downtown, the people own. I have friends that own buildings. I'm renting from the city. I'm renting from a buddy of mine, you know what I mean? It's all, how do I say it without saying? Because I don't want to come up here and what I say, you know, because I'm going to own three restaurants and people are going to listen to me. You know, I just, you know, we're all putting our whole hard-earned money into every aspect of downtown. And, you know, for me to say yes or no, I really don't want to say because I want to learn more, but it's, but I know what they're saying, and I understand what they're saying. And I don't want to disrespect the council, I respect this young lady behind me because I always, I always my caller by last name, it's Barnes, but, you know, but it's just, I just want everybody to really look at it. Because if you really look at it, and like you said, every restaurant owner came downtown, came in here tonight to speak. Two of them left because they couldn't wait. You know, two of them except for 1884. So, I mean, the support of showing what needs to be done is here. You know, without me, you know, grandstanding because it's not going to make, you know, what's best for the city, what's best for the, for our community, you know? And I think if I say something not egotistically or rudely, I don't want to put myself in that boat because I don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, that person. But, you know, read between the lines, you'll, you know, see what it's about. And like I said, I appreciate letting me talk, I appreciate gentlemen and everybody guys standing up and speaking for the restaurants and people speaking for the buildings they own. So I just, you know, just look at Eustis and what we're doing, and just hopefully make the right decision. The way we go is the way we need to stay and not change it if somebody had an idea or change it. or change it because we think we should have all restaurants. Basically, that's all I'm saying. If I said anything that made sense, I appreciate it very much, I appreciate your time. Again, thank you for everybody that's still up here, and supportive of the restaurateurs that showed up, and also the supportive business owners and buildings that showed up, so, thank you very much.
Tilly, if you're not comfortable with it, you need to say that.
I do.
You know, it's, again, and I've never been this person. I'm usually, "What'd you say?", and I fly off. You know what I mean? So, I'm trying to learn, but like I said, everybody, I know what Randy says, I feel the same way. We do this, we do that, but is it, it's just, if it beautifies downtown, and it's something that's gonna make it run, it's great, but if it's not, it's not, I mean...
I would really encourage you to go in and read all the backup documentation. This is the first reading?
I can give you 100% wrong.
This requires a second reading, yes.
Okay.
So, I can give you 100% against it, and I can give you 100% for it. Because I know people that live in Colorado, I know people that live in Jersey and Philly, that do this stuff. You know, but like I said, we're a small community, season's over. You know, look at the streets. So, you know, like I said, you can look at it this way, look at it that way, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your investment in our city. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, this is my first one, I don't know what to do, but I'd like to say something.
If you'll come up and just give us your name at the podium, please. You're fine.
I don't want to go to jail.
You're fine.
You send him a pizza!
The chief's asleep, and the other one's eating pizzas, so...
If you'll take one of those forms to fill out, too, and hand it to Mary.
You can go ahead and speak, just go ahead and fill it out later.
So, my name is Tara Dufresne, I live in Eustis on Lake Shore. And just listening to everybody, like, we have such a passion for this city. I get so emotional, because I love our city. And when I go to Mount Dora, and I see the folks that they have there, and I go to Eustis, I mean, my husband and I have been just constantly, "What can we do, what can we do?" And unfortunately, our neighborhood is that older neighborhood, and so we've had a lot of people age out, and we have a lot of new neighbors. And our neighbors move in, and they have a passion for the city. And so, we are encouraging them, oh, sorry, we are encouraging them of, what can we do in Eustis? And how do we bring people to Eustis, and what do we do? And they have an idea. And right or wrong, and I feel compassion for the people who have restaurants, and I'm hearing the stories, but I would just ask, when I heard the prayer at the beginning of this session, I was impressed with, you know, don't look at the color, and then, whatever, the nationality, the religion, whatever. Let's do something great for Eustis, whatever that is. So, I'm just asking, let's look at what this is, and I heard, I've talked to Rodrigo and his family, and I love their concept, so I think a lot of people are really missing what that concept is about, and it's about bringing people together, and families, and having a place where people just connect. So, anyway, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Welcome to Eustis. Anyone else?
I just, I would like to also, all of you know me very, very well. I spent a lot of money in Eustis. As a matter of fact, I think one year, I thought I spent $5,000 just eating out, mostly in Eustis. So, you know me well, you know I love Tilly's food, I love Dan's quiet wine, Uncorked Wine Store, Sandy's Pizza, the new Nalan Sultan Mediterranean Grill, La Sol de Mexico. We actually make U-turns on 441 and say, "Forget those, let's go over to El Sol de Mexico." I've been there three times this past week, I'm sorry, I did go, Tilly, didn't go to your store, so...
Breaking up.
But, as I'm thinking about this, and I realize, you know, that's a major issue for us. We have so many vacant stores, I think, in past times, there hasn't been much growth. And I looked down the stores, down Magnolia, and I realized, there's no activity, there's nothing else going on. So, I think if we draw some attention, we might draw families in here with kids who may like that alternative food. I still am old enough, I guess, or feel like I need to sit down and be in an air-conditioned room, that's what I like, and I'm gonna continue doing that. Do I miss any restaurant that's here, that I go to? I don't want to insult anyone, so I think...
Crazy Gator.
Oh, Crazy Gator, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize it with the hat on, so, so I go everywhere. And you know what? I also go to Mount Dora, I go to Taveri's, I go to the Main Street Diner. I like alternatives, I really enjoy that, but I also feel we have an opportunity to maybe bring another business to town. We still have too many vacant lots. But, what you're talking about, Magnolia, I'm not sure what the commissions did back then, but who allowed that building with all the columns there to stay vacant? Or it's stored to some kind? Beautiful building. And also, in the last four years, I've seen so many facilities closed. Restaurants closed, because they didn't have a good business plan, but we need to continue trying. The Beach Thrill that Tilly's taken over, invested so much money in that facility, and they could not make it run. I don't think it's because there's a need here, I think it's because it's the way of being run. Everything here in Eustis, Peddler's Wagon, Tilly's, Sandy's, Randy's, Nalan from Mediterranean Grill, Dan, those people come here because that's what they want. They want to go there. I have to admit, there are times I look through the window at Tilly, so I hope he's not watching me, but I'm gonna go to another store. That's the way I am. I think a lot of us like alternatives. Don't let us be, in effect, pigeonholed and say, "Because, you know, we think there may be another alternative out there to provide for families, people who are gonna come in and say, 'Hey, let's go to that food truck place.'" And they may stop by and say, "You know what, it's too hot out, I'm gonna eat here." Those are the kind of things that I think we need to have options for people in our city. From my perspective, I think we're gonna see some growth. You know, we have a planned development on East Orange, there's a 202 apartment building, the ALF here. We also have 69 homes going up over, hopefully by Tony's Pizza. That's all potential growth that's gonna bring people downtown. Let's hope, you know, this commission's been sitting here, well, with our new Commissioner Lee, you know, for a few months here, and I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, "We haven't done anything with these neighborhoods, or these empty lots, they've been there for 15 years." What happened to the commissions before this? Where did they go? Why weren't they looking at some kind of growth potential? This is our opportunity to start that. We do have some folks who are gonna be buying homes in Eustis, and I think that's gonna make a difference. So, I'm in favor of it, I do agree that it may have some impact on you, but I don't think it'll be that dramatic. I think people make those choices because they want to go, and I think Sandy was right. Food trucks are pretty expensive, and you can't beat some of the meals that we get here in Eustis. So, from my perspective, it seems like it's a good idea. And the other, the thought about it, too, is that it's not something, it's gonna be, it's gonna have some sort of a business downtown, or around the CBD, that's gonna generate some more money for the city. And now, the business is gonna come and grow. We have a new facility called Yo Ho Ho, and there's a dress shop now right by Nalan's Mediterranean Grill, with windows and displays and stuff. When did you see that last? Probably never. Well, there's something going on in this commission that's making all this possible. And it's because of the way the messages that we send, the mayor sends, and I know Karen LeHoo from the past, we are all here trying to provide that message, that we're gonna provide some growth here for our city. So, it's important for us to move it forward, let's see how it goes, and see, hopefully, the city will prosper from that, and so will those vendors, so will those people who are, have those brick-and-mortar here, in Eustis, and make a go of it, so...
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I was thinking about this, and I went to Boxee Park in Lake Nona, and it's a fascinating place. They have, but they used boxcars. And it resembles what I think would happen here, and the boxcars look like it could be food trucks. There were families there, there were older people, younger people, little children, they had dogs, and it was like a community event. I don't, I think what has happened here is, I didn't hear his description of what he would be doing, but when I heard that, I thought, "Wow, it would be nice if it was like Boxee Park." And families would come and enjoy what was going on, and participate in it, and have that real atmosphere. The others, and that gives us the options, that gives us some options, because, again, we go, and we sit in a restaurant, air-conditioned, have our meals served to us and all. But then, that's more, to me, like an open venue where people, I don't, I'm not sure what he's gonna have, but it just sounds to me, like what I saw, I would envision, I would hope, that we would have something like that to attract more people, and maybe different people who would come to Eustis. And maybe just being able to, all of us have something, and allow each other to be able to produce something that would be beneficial to us, and it would attract people. And it may not be that everybody wants to go to these wonderful restaurants we already have, but that they might want to be outside, just sit around with the kids, do whatever. And, but I think the unfortunate thing is, we didn't get to hear his vision. I don't know what his plans are.
It would come with the CUP, there would be the site, yeah.
Right. But I think I would be more excited if he had described what he intended to do, and that whether or not he's gonna move trucks, whether or not he's gonna be stationary, and what kinds of foods he would offer, and what did he want to do, and what kind of people did he want to attract. So, I think it's really, it would be really cool if we could have a variety of things that would attract people to Eustis, and to have enjoyment. I mean, we can all, let's just get along, I guess you could say, and do something, try something different. If it doesn't work, you know, then we do away with it and try something else.
Thank you, everyone.
This is a newbie.
Thank you. Commissioner Alberdi?
I'm going to look at it from, I had a business with my husband, I had a bar and grill. And then, for a year, I had a little deli with my husband in Eustis. One year, we lasted one year. A lot of it was over the issue of advertising, signage. We were where Barnwood was in that building, so driving traffic there was very difficult. We didn't own the building, we leased the property, and I just feel like, and we bought a lot of our equipment and everything, and we had to do a build-out when we went in there. I understand, and I come from a business background. My father was an entrepreneur, and we were. When you go into business like that, and you put it all in, that's your heart, your soul, and all of your money, anything that threatens that is aggravation to you. You should not have to worry about that. And I've been here long enough to see the core downtown start to come back. I just don't understand, the bottom line for me is, why, why the Central Business District? Why not outside of the Central Business District? There's plenty of property that could accommodate, one, two, three food trucks. Not a lot of renovation that would need to be done. I have a problem doing it in the Central Business District. These people have been here, they've worked hard, we're opening more restaurants within the community. And I just think, if you're looking at, overall, for the city, to attract people to the city, that kind of venue outside of the CBD, I think would be absolutely wonderful. And I'm sure every restaurateur in here would say, "Yeah, we don't have a problem with that." It's just, the competition is so much now, and our business is, it's our slow season, and I can feel their pain. So, my thing is, if you don't have the investment like these restaurateurs do, I don't know why it has to be in the CBD. I think this is a prime area, it could be really prime in a couple of years. And we have vacant slots downtown right now, that we would like to fill with permanent restaurants. So, my vision is, yeah, do the food truck thing outside of the CBD, and that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have much of a voice, but I'm, this idea attracted me from the beginning. I like what we have, and what we have suggested to us, that would monitor and would, on a case-by-case basis, and I'd like to see it move forward. Again, this is the first read. This is the first reading, though.
We'll have to, if this passes tonight, there will be a second reading on this at the next meeting. This is one of the harder decisions that I've had to make, because I appreciate every one of you business owners downtown. My grandparents owned a furniture store down there for 70 years. I know how hard it is to keep businesses going in our downtown district. So, I've wrestled with it, and I tell you, I'm excited that new people coming to town want to try different things. And, but I do have great respect for those that have been here, that have put money in their time. Because every one of you that own a business downtown, if we step in and ask for a donation for something, you're right there giving it, and you're giving back to our community. Not that these food trucks won't, but it's just something that, it's something different, and we haven't tried it yet. So, Commissioner, before us, we have ordinance 19-12. What's the will of this commission?
I move that we approve on first reading, resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution.
Ordinance, 19-12.
19-12.
A second?
Thank you. Have a first and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LeHoo Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberdi?
Nay.
Mayor Holland?
Nay.
Coming down to other business, we did away with 8.1, is that correct, Mr. Nyberg?
Yes, sir.
So, we're coming down to 8.2, discussion regarding commission attendance at commission, uh, community events.
Thank you, Mayor, this was a request of an item to be put on the agenda by Commissioner Morin, so I'll defer to him.
We have a lot of events that we can or cannot go to during the year, and I know it's usually, I think it's something that the commission should probably have some, some sort of jurisdiction over, like, things that we believe we should be doing. And, for instance, it came up with the Lake Cares Project, they feed a lot of our folks here in Eustis, obviously. I think it's twice a month, I believe now, they give out food. And we didn't have representation there, and so, and actually, it started before that. I thought, it should be something the commission decides, the five of us decide, what are those events that we see that are annual events, that we should support by buying tables? So, that's what I'd like to be able to do, is figure out what those events might be.
The point of consideration is, typical table for an event like that is $1,000 to $1,500. Most time, they're an eight-to-10-person table. Our experience in the past has been, we've had difficulty filling tables, so we'll pay full price for a table, and then...
And nobody shows?
And nobody shows. So, what we've done is just, within the commission's budget, we've earmarked a certain amount of money for tickets for those events, and then typically, you'll get an email from Sarita regarding these events, and we've bought individual tickets for them event, rather than purchasing an entire table. We found that we can still get a good level of participation in those events, but yet not make a full payment that, in many cases, we haven't gotten full benefit from.
Okay, I'm fine.
And I believe in your email today, you got community, Lake County Community Service Awards invitation, so if you'll check that.
Yeah, well, that's one that I was just asking Sarita, do we have a table for the city? Would it be good for us to represent?
I think we've done community service awards.
For all of us together?
I think we've always done a table for that one.
We've done that before, and if I can get commitment to, is that a 10-person table, Sarita?
It's actually not listed as tables, we're just pretty much restoring the same way that we did for our chamber breakfast.
Oh, so just...
Oh, so you don't, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, I misread that, I'm sorry. Okay.
I think we've done up to two tables for that one in the past, because it's something that a lot of people work together.
Yeah, the chamber is, the chamber has bought enough for a full, they've bought eight tickets for, they'll fill up a table with the chamber, so if we can get eight people, obviously, they'll put us all at one table.
It's just, of all the events I've been to in the last two and a half years, it's been great to have a table, and Eustis actually, we cheer him on at the events and stuff, we make sure everybody knows Eustis is there. But I'll go along with what you have.
Normally, don't open this up, but I'll let you quickly.
Man Cobb, I'm just the current treasurer for the Lake County Sheriff's Charities, and I would just encourage you to please keep that in mind. I think you guys had a full table at our event, so, and our event does sell tables, we have very, very, very few individual tickets, so please keep that in mind.
I don't remember. I think we need to look at case by case and go through things, you know?
Most of them send us and don't know this.
Leave it the way it is for right now, and then, just as long as we're notified, we can respond quickly. I think the key, I think the key to it is, is respond... we can respond quickly. I think the key, I think the key to it is, is responding quickly to Sarita's emails, so that we know if we all wanna go, then that way we can activate in a proper way.
I think Ron was also right. We need to encourage our commissioners to try to attend as much as possible.
Oh, absolutely.
Have representation there. He's right, I've been to a lot of these events where nobody was, else was there, so, I know Vice Mayor and I are always at those events, it seems, but it'd be great to have everybody there.
Well, you know, a lot of those events that you've had lately have been, while there's been other city events going on.
Yeah.
There've been events in the park and things like that, so there's only so many, I mean, we all can't break away, unfortunately, so, um, but I think that we all need to attend as much as we possibly can, and I think our, our, um, the joint adventure with the chamber helps also, because it shows Eustis participating as a group, so I appreciate that.
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Coming down now to future agenda items, is there something you would like to see on a future agenda? And I'll get to reports later if you wanna talk about something good, but something for a future agenda. Marie, anything?
Oh, one of, uh, several of the business owners talked to me about, um, the lighting downtown, um, how dark it is, and, um, one incident was the car show, and, you know, when it got dark at eight o'clock, the car show, they couldn't see anything.
We're, we're working on a plan for that.
Okay, alright.
So, yeah, we don't, we'll, we'll bring something to you shortly, we're already working on that.
Yeah, we need to come up with something, and it is, it is dark when you walk down Eustis Street, it's, it's dark, yes.
As you go north there, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else, Marie?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
So, for our concert next weekend, um, our Bike Fest concert, um, are we doing any additional spraying for the mosquitoes? 'Cause-
Rick?
We don't spray. Um, I can reach out to Lake County, Lake County does all the-
They need to go spray, yes.
Is it really?
Yes.
It's bad.
I don't know what their schedule is, like how long it takes to kill them, or whatever, but we need to have them dead by the twenty-seventh, okay?
But the no-SEMs, like?
Yes, the no-SEMs. I, I was at, at Taverri's, at their event, the last concert they had, and it wasn't too bad when you were away from the lake, but when you were standing by the lake, it was like they were all over you, so, unless we're gonna have a concert in the dark, you know.
Yeah, I think the other thing, excuse me, Tilly's, they have the same thing, when they come out, they swarm, and they actually get between the doors and come to the restaurant. It was awful downtown, so.
And quiet rides, and they get a mouthful of bugs.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are.
Bob, any, anything else, Marie, tonight?
Uh, let's see, lights.
The lights, the con, the mosquitoes.
No, the other stuff I have is good stuff, so.
Okay.
I'm saving it.
Emily, anything for a future agenda item? Have you even thought back that far?
Not yet.
Okay, got a vice mayor, no. Okay, let's go to anything good. Marie, let's go ahead and start with you.
Okay, good, good things. Uh, Eustis is finally on the, a map as far as signage, getting off the four-twenty-nine. I don't know, those of you that drive it, uh, within the last, I would say the last month, there are two signs that, that do say, um, Eustis is a real place, so, um, you know, I guess making noise is what, what gets things done. Yes, it does, um, and, and actually showing our disdain when things don't get done, it, it really helps also.
Absolutely.
So, people start to pay attention. Um, I am, um, signed up to go to the Marijuana Conference next month. Uh, it's in Winter Garden. Uh, we will, um, see a grow facility and a dispensary, so I felt like that was information that I, I need to get personally and be there, um, so I can bring it back and share, um, because, you know, you guys are looking pretty progressive here, so I'm thinking, maybe, you never know, maybe, 'cause somebody else is gonna open a dispensary in Lake County. I'm telling you that right now, and it's probably gonna be Taverri's.
Yeah. Is that it, ma'am?
When they lift the moratorium. Yeah, I thought that was a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not good for examples.
Yeah, yeah. Bob, anything?
Yeah, just, just great stuff. I think what happened last Thursday, I think we were all tense, uh, with the selection of, of candidate for, uh, and selecting Commissioner Lee. I just thought the process went extremely well. The only issue I have is that we probably need to figure out what that process would be for the future, so we may wanna consider a workshop where we take thirty minutes or so and come up with what we learned from this procedure, and say, okay, how do we wanna do this for the future? It was the best that I've seen us do, but it appeared to be sort of sporadic decision-making, so I thought if we could have thirty minutes, maybe for the next commission meeting, and talk about what do we do, how do we do this?
Is that an agenda?
That's an agenda item.
Um, I, I was thinking a workshop, so we could talk about the procedure, make it sure it's getting written in, and, 'cause-
We can either do that or put it under other business at the end of the commission meeting.
I think it takes more of a conversation longer than I think an agenda item would be, only because, um, uh, the, the process did change after the referendum in two thousand sixteen, and it was drastic changes, where no longer was the governor, uh, after thirty days, we didn't make-
The voters voted on that for us.
Right, I'm not changing that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that on March twenty-first, when I was not here, I'm not sure you were made aware that that was the case. So, even though the process of, of interviewing people may have been the same, which we need to look at, um, the whole idea, the, the, the expectations were higher, because you were reporting for twenty-one months. It weren't reporting prior to two sixteen, where we had, um, thirty, thirty to ninety days, and then you also had an appointment by the governor, if we didn't make an appointment within thirty days. So, the March twenty-first meeting kinda got me a little backed up a little bit, 'cause I realized, no, there's a lot of changes, and we need to respect those changes from the voters, and determine how we make this, um, viable, uh, more lucid, I guess, and more inclusive kind of a, a process. So, I would prefer to do a workshop, and like I said, even thirty minutes before our next meeting, just to go through it, and hopefully the staff can help us out with some of the-
Are they being scheduled before the next commission meeting then?
Yes. Yeah, we have the, um, CIP workshop already scheduled for May second.
Is that scheduled for? What time is that for?
I don't remember if it's five or five-thirty.
If, if you don't-
Just let us know.
If I can work with Mary and Ron, and then probably have something, and then the workshop could be fifteen minutes.
All right, we'll schedule fifteen minutes for the CIP.
Yeah, and we'll do.
If we can't do it at the next meeting, we'll do it at the following meeting.
Yeah, hopefully none of us are going anywhere, so.
I know, but we all have great hair.
Karen, do you wanna say something good about that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, um, we don't have, um, Mr. Wheeler's not here tonight, he went out and took photos, and, um, took photos of homes that are available, or not available, that are, that are abandoned. Um, has anyone done anything with that?
I don't know how he goes there.
I sent you, I sent you an e, an email this afternoon.
Oh, you did, okay, I can see.
Uh, the first one on the list, it's got no code violations. The owners just decided they didn't wanna rent it anymore, so they, they've secured it, and it's sitting there, but it, it looks fine to me, so it's, it's under current management by the owners. Uh, the second one, the yellow one, has an open code violation we're addressing, however, has a sale of that property pending.
Pending, okay.
So, it's not abandoned. Uh, the third one is, uh, a building that, and you'll, you've got a case coming up to review about releasing a lien. This is what happens when you release a lien, and the owner didn't do what they were supposed to do. We have pending code items on there. We had to restart the process, because we had liens that were released by the, kind of, commission.
We could release that at one time, because they were gonna do something with the building, and it did nothing.
The individual didn't do that, so now we have to start the process over, to get to the liens, unforeclosed the lien, so, but we do have pending code action on it. The, the fourth one, there's no known violations, we're gonna take a look at that. Uh, the last one, there's no violations on it, that was vacated by the tenant on March the seventh. The owner still owns it, they're actively, has a water service there, and they're trying to get a new tenant for some of the property, so.
And I think it's on the, uh, the realtors list right now for sale.
So, the opinion that these were abandoned were obviously from Mr. Wheeler's observations.
Can you, can you, you write back to him then, let him know that?
I can do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, I'm done, sorry.
Emily, would you like to share anything?
Um, yes, I do have something. I first would like to acknowledge my mom, Ellen Matthews.
Hey, hey.
For her support, I thank her for her support and for making it possible for me to be here. Uh, everyone's calling her mom, so I'm getting a little jealous of all the siblings I've acquired, and I'd like to thank each of the commissioners for the faith and the trust they have in my abilities to be able to, uh, contribute as a team member, and I'd like to thank the audience for their show of support. I still hear the applause in my ear, and, uh, and I, I felt joy that they felt that I was a good selection, and, uh, and I, I thank everyone for their phone calls and emails, and even people stopping me in the store and congratulating me and, and offering their support, I appreciate that, and I especially thank the applicants who were so gracious in their support for me, and their offer to continue working on behalf of the City of Eustis. I've had a very busy week, I've met with department heads, I met with six of them, I have three tomorrow, and I'll be done, and I'm just amazed, and the, the thing I would say is that I have been an armchair quarterback. You know, I come to meetings, and I observe it on, 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 on the screen, and, and I think, well, why'd they do that, I'm being critical, and after meeting with the department heads and, and, and seeing things in action, seeing how they really work, and what they do to enhance the city, and, and all of the things they have to do to make decisions, to make correct decisions, I'm no longer a, a, a quarterback in all this, and I encourage the rest of the community to recognize that they are working hard. Um, the staff and, and commissioners are putting everything they have into it, and, and I didn't quite appreciate it until I began to visit with them and see all that, that they're doing, and I really do appreciate it, and so I encourage the community to support us and, and to, um, understand that we're available to ask questions, to, and, but sometimes also being able to say something positive or complimentary to the commissioners and the staff for the work that they do, and if you have something, um, that you disagree with, at least we can respect each other, or agree to disagree, but most importantly, I really am impressed with the amount of work and the kind of work that they're all doing, everybody's doing, to, um, improve the quality of life in Eustis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Got a vice mayor?
I attended, before I got sick and lost my voice, I attended the Lake Community Action, uh, meeting. They held a training session, um, they have another training session offered tomorrow, and, um, they are working to be more positive and to get, um, get more action out of the community action. Uh, I just wanna say one thing about the art museum. Is it sad that we've lost the art museum in Eustis? Yes, but is it a great thing that the board members were able to find a foundation to continue the mission and support their efforts? And I'm, I'm so very excited for them. They're getting, um, they have a, a great con, a great lease contract, they have one-year free rent, and the possibility of additional years. Um, they have a lot of work to do, it's not over yet, and, um, I encourage everyone that was sad about the museum leaving Eustis to call the board members, call the museum, they can use your support, and, um, it takes a lot of memberships to keep the doors open, so if you're truly interested, give them a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. Uh, one other good thing we got out of the interviews from the commission candidates the other night, uh, Mr. Hawkins, who was one of the candidates, has applied to be a member of the code enforcement board, so, uh, there's still vacancies there, so, uh, we'll be reaching out to the other candidates to see if they're interested in those vacancies, so we appreciate that.
I think Carol Jean was also interested.
Good, uh, if they're interested, um, if you have contact with them, uh, send them down to the HR department.
May I, one more thing, how about the library board, also?
Library board is well-
As I spoke to her, we need some good members, and I think, I was gonna ask Carol Jean to be on that one.
Oh.
Yeah, um, let, you guys wanna fight over this between you?
Fill all those positions.
Yeah. I'll send it to her, she can decide.
Uh, in relation to the Lima building, I will on the next agenda have an agenda item for discussion on disposition of that. Uh, I did receive a letter from an organization that has expressed interest in that, so we can discuss that, and then obviously any other future plans that you may wanna have on that. And if the mayor covers the one thing I discussed with him before the meeting, I am done.
Handle it.
Yes, sir.
One more, big things, Lake Gracie.
Oh, it looks great.
Ron?
It's looking good. The residents, uh, came together and paid for the weed cutting, and our staff provided some in-kind services-
Great job.
-and hauling the, the seaweed out of there.
They went by my house all day long. Great job, Ron, great job.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing.
Nothing, wow. Um, just wanna say welcome to Emily. Um, I, I, I look forward to being able to work with you. I've served with you on other things, um, we've worked in the community together, and you're gonna do great things for the City of Eustis, so welcome. Long meeting for you to start, but, um, it wasn't too, too painful, I hope. Um, you know, this is Easter week, and, um, just wanna wish everybody out there a happy Easter, but there's also another special day tomorrow, it's your vice mayor's birthday, so, wanna wish our, our vice mayor a happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, love each other. If you see our city staff, thank them for all that they do. They work hard, keeping us together and keeping us moving forward. Thank you for being here with us tonight, we're adjourned.
All right, good job, good job.
Happy Easter.
We love Lake Gracie.
Very nice, yeah.
Oh, it's really good.
You know what, that's what I told you.